Have two party up here so we're packed. We want to pledge that he is the pack.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and with every dignity and justice for all.
The mayor will not be today and we are gracious to have Jean. She will look at us, she's going through some issues, but we are most appreciative. Right now, may I have a motion for the minutes of December the 4th? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, use a sign of the eye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion is carried. Next, the finance payments, can I get a motion?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, use a sign of the eye.
Aye.
Aye, motion has been carried. First order of business according to the agenda is administration of oath of office to the open police officer Sedalia Watkins, I probably screwed your name up even though I've seen many of names, but what is it?
Sondiata.
Sondiata, I was close. If you will, would you please come forth?
Ma'am, I'd like to introduce you to our newest member. This is Sondiata Watkins, he just recently graduated Baltimore City's Police Academy last Thursday night. He's a lifelong resident of Smyrna, Delaware, right? And now he lives just outside of town, but with an Elton address. He came to us from Christiana Hospital where he was a security guard, so right in line with Public Safety and we're really happy to have him. He's going to finish out his field training under one of our highly skilled field training officers, but we're welcome and we want to thank you and welcome you. Yes, raise your right hand.
Repeat after me, the oath of office of police, aye, state your name, please.
Aye, Sondiata Watkins.
Do swear and affirm?
Do swear and affirm.
That I support?
That I support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be?
And that I will be.
Faithful and bear true allegiance?
Faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently?
Diligent.
And faithfully?
And faithfully.
Without partiality?
Without partiality.
Or prejudice?
Or prejudice.
Execute the police, execute the office of police officer?
Execute the office of police officer.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state?
And laws of this state.
Welcome to the board to the town.
He'll also be signing the sanctity of life pledge that says that he as a certified police officer in accordance with his assigned duties and with his oath as a police officer recognizes that all life is precious and valuable and pledge that he will do his job ethically to protect all persons. It's a requirement of the training commission that all police officers in the state of Maryland sign some form of sanctity of life pledge. Welcome. Commissioner Aspina, Assistant Town Administrator Michelle Henson?
Hi, we've met.
Town administrator Louis George?
Ole Miss Police Academy, class of seventy-six.
Acting Director of Finance?
I should say eighteenth. Sorry, seventy-eighteenth.
Kishna Givens, yeah, that's better, much better.
Thank you.
Everybody look at me. Would you like to come up and get a picture with them as well? We can't do those without family and our supportive role in the county.
At this point of the agenda, we are ready for a public hearing, which is twelve oh seven.
I can read a summary of the amendment, which is more tense. Bending the town's charter article eight, section CA dash three, borrowing power procedures and limitations. This amendment provides for the recurrence of debt, of issuance of bonds, notes, and delivery of other evidences of indebtedness as presented by the board. This, I'm sorry, prescribed by the board. This amendment further describes evidences of indebtedness or included obligations of the town, contributing to guarantee or make debt service payments in connection with state and relevant bonds, notes, or similar instruments of the debt, including any agency, department, instrumentality, or political subdivision, proceeds of which are being used for public purposes that benefit the town. This amendment further provides that any such bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness may be sold by negotiation at a private sale without solicitation of competitive bids or through private placement if a resolution by the board provides such authorization. This amendment further provides that the total amount of the bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness of the town, outstanding at the time of any new indebtedness, is issued, incurred, less sinking funds established for the retirement of debt shall not exceed five point six of the assessed value of all real and personal property in the town of Elton. That's basically a summary of that, this amendment. And the language in the amendment is based on Council of Ways.
I ask Kimberly Minn to join the meeting today if you had any questions about this resolution and as to whether or not I'm a read to the table or a vote, or what is the guidance?
Well, basically, this resolution has been brought before us at an earlier time and it's our understanding that it will not be affected today because of extenuating circumstances. So if Kim or Louis want to address why?
No, it's more of just a deferral of the vote. Today's the day that was advertised for the public hearing. So the purpose of today is the public hearing and then it will be introduced for a vote at a later public meeting and, you know, in accordance with the typical agenda, but today's simply the public hearing, so I don't know if there's any one from the public that showed up with questions or comments, but that's the purpose of today because in accordance with legal requirements for Maryland and as Michelle and Louis are much closer to it with experience for the town of Elton, there is prior advertisements that went out in the public paper and this is the date for the public hearing, but the resolution itself won't be introduced or adopted until a later date.
Well, I'm glad you're on because first of all, we came with a different agenda. We were under the assumption that there was going to be a vote. Thanks for being on and I guess Louis let us know that we will not be voting today, but, you know, I'm just speaking on behalf of the four that are here, so one or two or maybe all of them may have something to say in regards to this because we're looking forward to finish this resolution with a vote.
Do you want to mention that this was a request from the underwriter, basically because prospective bond purchasers may be confused by the passage of this resolution at this point in time. Consequently, we're postponing it because of the debt and the one point eight percent cap that's in the guarantee and replenishment agreement.
So just to kind of remind the folks, you know, again, by the way, I can't, I can only see the commissioners, is there anyone here from the public?
Is there anyone here from the public? There is none.
Oh, for their, okay, because that's the point of this public hearing, but certainly happy to answer any of your questions, so there were two points to the charter amendment. The first is that the town itself needs to quote waive a public sale requirement so that if it ever in the future wanted to issue bonds, it wouldn't need to go through some extra steps and gymnastics that are required with a public sale. And so when we represent towns who occasionally from time to time issue debt, we help streamline that piece of the process for them. And so since the charter amendment is possibly getting introduced anyway, we suggested that piece of it. And then the other piece of it is the town had, you know, a two-tiered debt limit, right? And the idea is to again streamline that piece as well because currently you have a debt limit of five point six percent for your bonds, but really, you know, indebtedness can take all different kinds of forms and so the idea is to just have one debt limit that applies to everything. And so that was the point of that. But at this point, right, like I think the town, you know, still is, you know, today is the purpose was the public hearing and I think, you know, the idea is that a later date it will be introduced and adopted once, you know, once any questions have been answered. But the idea is not to approve that today.
So we're still under dilemma, when will this next date will be?
January eighth.
What's that?
January eighth. We'll be able to make your decision through adopted.
So the recommendation from Louis is we vote on it on January eighth?
Yes.
Okay. Amy Allen, Jean, Rob?
No, no, I understood fully before we even came in, so.
Thank you for your presence, Kim, and we're closing this public hearing at twelve fourteen and we'll see you on the upcoming date. Thank you very much.
Take care and be well, if I don't see you all, happy holidays.
Same to you.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Michelle, you have it.
I do, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Following our agenda next, we have bid openings and recommendation of award comprehensive plan update and that is coming from Jean Manner, Director of Planning.
Good afternoon.
Hey, Jean.
So it's that time again for us to update our comprehensive plan, our state requirements. So I've reached out to a number of different companies, we had three responses to the request for proposals to update the town's comprehensive plan. The three proposals were, the first one was from EPR PC out of Charlottesville, Virginia. Their bid, not to exceed price bid was a hundred thousand dollars. The next one was Wallace Montgomery and their not to exceed bid price was one twenty-nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred. They're out of Hunt Valley, Maryland. And then the third one was Meaton Hunt out of Baltimore and their not to exceed price was a hundred and forty thousand. And in reviewing, the proposals are all competent bidders. The EPR PC, the low bidder, they've done some work in Maryland, but they're mostly, most of their references, I think, were in Virginia. The both Quinn and I reviewed these and we both determined that Wallace Montgomery was probably the better fit for the town. Wallace Montgomery, Michael Baer currently works with Wallace Montgomery, he wrote our comprehensive plan last time. And he's also had written Cecil County's comprehensive plan. The state lived locally, they've worked on common plans in Coolsville, Worcester, Aberdeen, Rehoboth, Georgetown. They also wrote our East Elton Traffic, Traffic Circulation and Safety Plan, which we just adopted.
Yeah, this is huge.
So Wallace Montgomery has been involved closely with the town, most closely, so my recommendation is to award it to Wallace Montgomery for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred. This, in my budget every year, I set aside funding for capital and other improvements and this project will take about eighteen months, so that would cover two fiscal years and so I should have that as long as the same amount budgeted every year as it has been, that should cover the payment for this.
Yeah, but eighteen months, that's certainly twenty-four, so if you didn't go into fiscal years, correct?
Right. Takes quite a while.
Yeah. There was, the timeline was, EPR had proposed within a year that they could get it done. Wallace Montgomery's eighteen months and Meaton Hunt was two years.
Sounds feasible. I personally liked your recommendation because that was going to be part of my questions. Didn't we work with them before? And is there advantage to going with this local state versus Virginia?
Yes.
So you answered both my questions.
Amy Allen?
Recommendation, reasons for it, all sound valid, very good.
So you need your motion now.
If you want to award the contract, then we can get this started.
Yeah, I think we need to.
Is there a motion?
I would like to make that motion.
Second. All those in favor, use a sign of the aye?
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion is carried, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you and Quinn for all that work you had to do to get it to where it is today.
Next on our agenda, Chip Romrell, Director of Building and Zoning, Resolution R fourteen twenty twenty-four, adopting of updated building codes, supplementing Resolution R one eleven twenty twenty-four.
Yes, there were three additional building codes that we will be adopting on top of the other four we have. Twenty twenty-one International System Building Code Incorporated by Reference and Comar zero nine point one two point five eight point zero three. Twenty twenty-one International Swimming Pool Code Incorporated by Reference and Comar zero nine point one two point five six. And the International Fuel Gas Code Incorporated by Reference and Comar zero nine point two zero point one zero point zero six. You have any questions?
Any questions?
These are just all required?
Yes, it's codes the state adopts and sometimes they, the mechanical, the plumbing and the gas codes get adopted by the state plumbing board and they don't show up with the other state codes. They moved all this operation, most of it, to the Labor and Licensing Board a few years ago to simplify it, but it has not simplified it. You still have to go to many places to find all this stuff.
Okay.
So that's why the delay.
So what's the time basically for the discipling of the updating of the building codes?
Generally, every three years.
Every three?
Yeah. So the state is way behind with the twenty-one, but generally they do run a couple of years behind, so there's always a lot of issues that they want to work out and there's amendments, they adopt a lot of these with their own amendments, so that's why it takes quite a while to get them done.
Even though it's every three years, I guess you can squeeze one and two in during that period of time?
Yeah, sometimes they do adopt some codes in between and it's hard to keep up with them because they don't, the notification is, you know, it's none to none. But this is pretty much, now we have the whole gamut of codes that have been updated for the twenty-one, so I don't foresee anything else until the state adopts the twenty-four codes.
So the guys in your department, you all do this collectively or do you do it and then transfer that information?
Well, we all get the books. I mean, I'm not sure if I've got the question.
You got it, go ahead.
We all get the books and we have to go through them and see the differences. There's minor differences, you know, from code change to code change, but nothing too drastic usually.
Okay, is there a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, use a sign of the aye? Eyes have it, motion is carried, thank you, Chip.
Can I ask you why you're here?
Yes.
Take advantage of it? Did you ever get that email from Alicia? The mayor had tasked, given her a task to reduce her research, you know, on commercial codes? You were given that?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure you got it.
Yeah, I got it.
Good, and while you and Jean are here, if it's okay with you Charles?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Handicap parking, very quickly. Are the same standards applied for senior housing as, you know, any other commercial building or residential building, the same required number of parking spots?
I think it does, I don't know if it's Jean has.
I have to pull the.
Could we look into it? I had brought that up a while ago about parking at senior housing complexes or apartments. And the reason that I'm prompted to do that is right across the street. If we're using what is just a standard amount that we would for any apartments, I don't think it works personally through experience. The fact that when you have fifty-five and older, I'd say sixty percent of them are handicapped. Therefore, any future development that may occur, I think, should have a relook on the number of spaces that we're requiring a developer to provide for handicap. And that's all I wanted to bring up. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Sarah. And now the pleasure of Alicia Calhoun, Executive Director of Elton Alliance. You're bringing others with you?
I've got friends.
Okay.
We have friends.
You have friends?
So we are here today as we have not been here recently to talk about the farmers' market. And you will remember that we got some grant funds last year when I first started to do some renovations and revitalization down there, it's beautiful. And so we want to keep moving forward with the initiative and we have had some discussions with Luke and his team at AUI around additional access to electric down there, which can certainly affect who we get down there and what we do down there. And you all have your seats, the renderings that have been given to us from AUI and we wanted to have a chance to bring Luke and his team here to answer any questions, to show you the renderings that they have created and just have some discussions about moving forward with this initiative.
Yeah, I can answer that with Alicia. We sat down a couple of weeks ago, we went with Chip to talk about the, you know, schematics, how this would work and codes, any type of issues we might foresee before going down this path a little further. He spoke with Luke as well during that time and we feel like we have a project that is actually very doable for environmental purposes, for improving the property, improving access, safety with lighting, electric, as Alicia said. And since that, I've actually staffed with Jean as well, we went over and checked our, is our plan called the five-year one we do?
Sustainable Communities Plan.
Sustainable Communities Plan. This was mentioned in our Sustainable Community Plan, so we're able to go after additional grant funds from the town side that could help maybe come up with some of this cost. So what we're here today to really ask is for the approval to move forward with what we're looking to do, which includes putting a pole at the edge of the rain garden. And that pole would go into the ground. The surface space we're using there is likely to be already.
Accounted for.
Accounted for with the blacktop, so we're not taking away any of the rain garden's purpose there. We've also looked at maybe extending it a little bit, we talked to Big Country Landscaping about putting together a quote for us on redoing the rain garden to make it more functional for one and more appealing to the eye, as well as support this, you know, pole that would go on the one side. The other thing, as you can see in the rendering, Nick over at AUI is great enough to put a truck underneath of the lights to show you, you know, Jean and I had conversations about height for traffic to be able to move underneath and flow through. Where the lights would string would also provide a very clear drive path to avoid going underneath the lights, you can go around to have egress from both, what is it, Howard and Bow Street. So we worked pretty hard on this, I think, and we're really hoping you guys can ask any questions you have and support us moving forward with Chip as our guide. And we did bring Luke and Nick with us as well, get any questions on material to be used, design concepts, any of that.
Again, you would like to enhance the rain garden, so what will you be doing? And you know who put that there?
The Elton High School.
The high school, correct?
Elton High School, sometime between two thousand six and two thousand twelve. I can't remember, but I was there then at Elton High, so I remember that.
And I did talk to the school of tech last year when we started looking at enhancements to this to see what their involvement might be and they, they just kept coming back to me saying the challenge is timing because, you know, if we want to do the work in the summer, the students are off for the summer. So they've been involved in our conversations and certainly we can engage them too, potentially for maintenance or what that may look like and their interest for involving the students there. So that definitely is of interest to us.
Yeah, and the idea of asking Big Country is just they're probably the only, you know, they have more intimate knowledge about the purpose of a rain garden, the types of, you know, plantings that you put in the rain garden and how you can maybe use the, you know, the local non-invasive things to support that without looking like sticks. That's the goal, is to make it a little, a little more appealing in the off-season as well as the bloom season. You know, there are, if you've driven by there, the parking barriers that awkwardly go around the rain garden, so we're looking for something.
Yes.
You know, if we're making this connect to our main street, the goal is, and, you know, Department Housing Community Development and Alicia's worked really hard with the design committee, is to create synergy within our downtown, not just this little teeny strip of Main Street. So, you know, having the overhead lighting, having the aesthetics look nice will really allow people to realize that it's not just this one strip of Main Street, you know, you can walk across, go by this nice little area, you can go over to Raina Park, you know, really kind of expand the look of our Main Street. So the rain garden, we think, needs to be a part of it.
I agree.
Any questions from anyone else?
I trust that you've done your due diligence with the DNR?
That's Jean, that's why I chose Jean.
They had no issues with putting things in the flood control because I know that can be an issue?
The project had been approved previously, I just want to ensure that what was planted in there or replanted in there meets the standards for a rain garden.
And the pole, they had no issues?
Yeah, our electric's going to be two feet above the flood line and that's what we were meeting with Chip about a little bit to figure out, you know, where outlets go, we're able to plug into hopefully a demorvis transformer, so everything should follow the requirements.
I think it's crazy to take an electricity to that.
And the displacement of the support pole, that would have to be taken into account to ensure that if there's any compliance with the flood plain regulations regarding fill in the flood plain, that it would comply with.
That's very meticulous about that.
Yeah, yeah, when we talked about it and, I don't know if you would talk about the size of the pole, because we didn't think we'd run into anything once we started really diving into what the pole would look like.
Yeah, so right now, there's not going to be, the imperious footprint is not going to exceed because we're reusing what's there. There's asphalt there, we're going to put concrete right back, so there's nothing, we're not changing anything there. So everything is going to be out of flood paint, she wanted, we're going to put all the electric down the building, it's going to be moved up high, so it'll be code, all of our electrical components that we're going to put on the pole and in the pavilion will be code.
Electric, we start from the top. We don't have a plug in, right?
No plug in. So the idea is we're going to put the electric on the pavilion out of the flood zone because you got to beat that anyways and then from there we'll run the conduit all the way down the face of the building, put some receptacles and we'll, right under the gutter, we'll pick up the power for the lights going out around that area.
We had thought of the plugging in for phone charging and stuff and so no one's going to be able. one's going to be able to reach that. It will be, if you look at the, um, the roof line where the gutter is on the interior, that's where those receptacles will be. So that way, you know, we can use it functional when we have vendors, but your average person's not going to be able to walk around with, there's power flowing there.
Yeah, because they're going to be about eight, ten feet up in there.
But they won't be there.
All of them.
They will be there.
Awesome. Thank you. Love that you're helping out with this, this is awesome. I love it.
So our next steps would be to get some funding for this, but outside of funding, is there anything else you need us to come back to you with to be able to move forward and start production on this once we gain our funding?
I think you guys should work in April then.
Yes, we're looking for April to kind of get this thing in place.
Chip, do you have a comment of two or three? Are they okay as, as a point?
I, I think everything's okay except we have to, you and I'll have to talk about the displacement of that concrete pole base. It is displacement.
Yeah, the eighteen inches.
I was getting displaced.
Yeah, the eighteen inches that goes below, I think, is our variable that we're unsure of.
How much money you need and how much have you got?
Twenty-five thousand.
Is what we're going to need and.
Say what? Have a huddle with that?
Twenty-five thousand or so.
Is what we're going to need. Um, we did receive thirteen thousand from the BLT last year and, um, we still have most of that left because I did allocate a lot of it for the farmers' market work, not necessarily the electric, but we had it to use. And so, um, and we're going to look for additional funding and we're coming back up on the rent cycle, so there's a possibility that based on timing, we might really get some additional funding from the BLT from the county.
And what was the grant you said? Because it was in the Sustainable Communities.
When we did that.
Yes, so we can also.
Is there any funding out there just to clean up both parking lots?
Jean wanted to talk about that.
It's all just blows. Yeah, so the improvements of both of those parking lots is mentioned in the Sustainable Communities Plan. And actually Danielle and I spoke Bennett and I, uh, recommended that it just become part of a larger project that would address those two parking lots on the other side of Bow Street at Jason Howard to provide, um, landscape islands and, and other types of improvements in both of those parking lots. Maybe with the next community legacy round, if that's what the board would like to say.
I for one would like to see it.
Yes.
I mean, I know it's in a flood plain, but it's still, it's never, you know, there's no excuse.
It's kind of annoying. What's there, it could be quite improved.
Absolutely, yes.
Absolutely.
Well, we're coming up on, you know, we've got a really good transition in our downtown right now. A lot of new businesses that are opening.
Yes.
Our vacancies are, are going to the wayside. Buildings that have been vacant for fifteen years, we're having filled. So I think having the parking be aesthetically pleasing and also functional where you're not potholes and, you know, things like that will be important.
We've also seen the success of moving, expanding Balfour's down to that parking lot for two years. And, um, I'm actually suggesting that we participate in National Food Truck Day in June of next year and that would potentially be held down here, um, with the new lighting and the newest aesthetics that are down there. So again, we can continue to have, um, that, that, that cohesiveness of Main Street down with that area as we continue to make it look better.
Sounds wonderful, thank you.
You know, it's amazing, you mentioned food trucks. I've been to, uh, of course I don't coach very long, but I see now that they don't have concessions staying outside of food trucks. And that has really been a great change for the high schools, they don't have to deal with that and for people, you know, leave the building.
Lots of pride.
Electric.
It's good, lots of pride.
Right. So the green light, does anybody want to change the rig? They got to go? You got to go.
All right. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Now Steve, you can carry that electricity across to the pavilion. Get the DNR to let us put some picnic tables in over there on the grassy area. Let's use it.
As we continue on, uh, report of the mayor, he's not here, but, uh, that resorts to us, maybe if we have something we want to share. First of all, if y'all, Paul, you want to share something here? Huh? Oh, that's right, Jean happened to give it an obvious here, now that happened.
Oh, I was just saying, you want me to do that?
Yes, I do. First of all, the, uh, holiday decorating contest, announcement of winners, um, Jean Roll.
Yes, thank you. This is an honor, Charlie. So again, uh, we, we had our decorating contest and there are actually fourth, four places with an honorable mention. So the honorable mention went to three Vince Court. I don't have a name to go without one.
They never registered and Kathleen was saying that our, um, a police officer had seen it and just wanted to say, this was really nice. Just bring it up. Said it was a really nice home, but they had not registered.
How about that? Maybe they'll register next year then. So the fourth place winner that, that will receive forty dollars, um, I'm assuming and give certificates for one or, or more, is Patricia Martin at Six Cow's Court. The third place winner who will receive sixty dollars of the same is Cindy Pearson at Two Cow's Court. Second place winner for seventy-five dollars is Crystal Johnson at Four O Seven Patriots Way in Patriots Glen. And the first place winner. Drumroll, hundred twenty-five dollars. Suzanne Basanti at One Zero Four Park Circle. She's done it again at, in the Elkton Heights. So congratulations to all those, um, and make sure this goes on our website. Maybe two more people will even register next year. Thank you.
And a shout out to Griff, was it Griff who went around took the pictures?
Yes, actually.
Because that was great and he can do it again for the next year, the next year, the next year.
That'd be good.
Because I know I went out last night, out for an hour in a lot of places I couldn't find because it was so dark and, uh, addresses were not listed, but then to come in and see what he had done previously, I mean, it matched a lot at all.
And he's actually online, so.
Oh.
Uh, Griff, you're online, thank you very much. Earl Potter said you can do this forever as, as long as you like.
You know, he may not have a microphone, but I'm sure he's.
That is why, don't say it, please. And with the cards, um, I use a holiday man has announcements today. Earl, huh?
I just want to wish everybody a happy, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy Hour.
And what else?
Oh.
We've given the staff and the employees off on December twenty-third.
That's the announcement we want to hear, we say.
Officially. There was a rumor first, but now it's official that, uh, he just brought that up, but we have voted on it, right? All those in favor of the recommendation of behalf of Earl Potter, use the sound of aye?
Aye.
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 Ayes have it, motion is carried.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Do you want to predate it and do it here for next year? This won't have to be mentioned? He hasn't seen the calendar yet.
I'm just glad he said we.
Always include us. Any reports starting on this end?
No, sir, but I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
I'd like to do the same and I also mentioned to Michelle, I wasn't sure, having been on there a little time, during the Christmas holiday, when the rig bag goes on a meter, is there still active, um, monitoring of that by a code enforcement?
Parking enforcement. Yes, we don't, we do not currently have anyone, uh, an employee for parking enforcement, but we do have officers that are monitoring that.
He resigned?
He's returning.
He did resign, but he's coming back in January.
January ninth. It was a emergency, family emergency.
Oh. Yeah, and he'll leave town and he thought it was state and he thought it was going to be a lot longer, so he's going to come back.
Well, he must have liked it enough.
Yes.
Is there any discussion that'd like to be brought forth either from the audience or online from anyone? Yes, go ahead.
Um, I just want to announce, yes, happy holidays to everybody and we have our final holiday Christmas event this Friday, Old Fashioned Christmas, where we'll do carriage rides through the town. We'll have the chocolate courtesy of Elkton Mercury Club and then we will also have a roaming Santa walking through town.
So your carriage ride is what costs, that's free?
It is a free cost. We do start signups at five o'clock. The horses do run for two hours, which is the maximum anybody can run them. So signups will happen very quickly from five to five-thirty, so we recommend anybody to get there early to sign up if they want to be on a ride.
So how long do you ride?
Probably nine, ten minutes.
Oh, I guess that's not bad. It's free?
Two minutes, no.
No, I'm saying the ride's free, so whatever time a person gets.
Exactly, there's no cost to the community for it, it's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Me?
Yes.
I was just wondering, like, possibly for next year, when you announce the winners of the, uh, how, how, uh, holiday decorating contest, if we could have pictures of those places and then put them up on the screen so everybody can see. That way you might want to know who you're competing with and what you could do to your house to make it even better.
You know, that, that, that's a good point, but certainly, like the officers, there's a lot of beautiful homes that have been lit up for, uh, Christmas holiday season, but, you know, people elect to do it because that's what they want to do and not necessarily be first, second, and third, but, um, it's a good idea as well.
Apparently we have the pictures, we just didn't think of that. So, thank you. Possibly for next year then.
Yeah.
Is there anyone online? If not, before this meeting is closed, I believe we would like to have a open, I mean, closed meeting.